Call this meeting in order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Is there any changes? Yep. Alright, can I get a motion to approve? Okay, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open forum. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? If you're here for the public hearing, we'll let you speak during the public hearing time. But otherwise, is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? Say anything, students? Alright, we're on the consent agenda. Approve the minutes, approval of bill of purchase orders, approval of investments. And we're on the resolutions. Donation of $500 from the American Legion Post 101 to the Chamber of Commerce. Bronz supporter of the Riverfest. Second resolution is a donation of $1,000 from the Melrose Lions to the Melozera Chamber of Commerce. Silver sponsor for the fireworks for Riverfest. Next one would be a $500 donation from the Lions Pioneer Inn towards the Melrose ambulance. Then there's gambling resolution for the Chamber of Commerce. There is ambulance Bad Det, Fire Department Bad Det, signed lease for Sterns Electric. An added item is a police officer McDonald's step increase. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick thing in regards to that billboard lease with Sterns. We anticipate the billboard going up by July.
On to reports. A is Sterns County Sheriff Candidate Bob Dickhouse. Is he present? Is he walking up the front? Alright.
Two minutes, right? Two minutes.
You're up already.
Well, thanks for waiting.
Perfect timing.
If you'd like to...
How many tickets did you give out there?
Well, welcome.
I don't have my lead in here, but catch my breath. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for allowing me to speak today. Just very briefly, the reason I'm here today is to announce that I'm running for the Sterns County Sheriff's Office. I've been a deputy for about, just about 25 years with Sterns County, and I've been in law enforcement for almost 27 years. My career started actually here in Melrose, where I grew up as a police reserve. Since that time, I've worked as a police officer in Richmond and in Cold Spring, and a correctional officer for Sterns County. That started in 1993, and after that, I worked as a patrol officer for five years, a patrol supervisor for another eight years, an investigator, deputy medical examiner, and I'm currently a lieutenant with the Patrol Division. In that position, I spend most of my time working directly with the sheriff and chief deputy, doing budget and budget planning, planning for the future for the sheriff's office. When I'm hopefully elected as sheriff, one of the main tasks that we'll have is planning for the future. The sheriff's office has been in the same building, and it has the same infrastructure for the last 30 some years, so we have some big challenges ahead of us to prepare for potentially a new jail, a new law enforcement center, and just general keeping systems and technologies up to date. We've had the same CAD system for a long time, the same dispatch center, so we're looking at, the new sheriff's got a big challenge ahead of them to make sure that we're prepared for the future. My current, having been in the sheriff's office for the last 25 years, I feel that I'm very well prepared for that. I've worked hard in all the divisions of the sheriff's office to prepare myself for that. My current position allows me to, like I say, work directly with the sheriff, make a lot of decisions that affect all the different departments in the jail, because I like to remind people that the sheriff's department isn't just 20, or actually 47 patrol officers driving around. We actually have over 200 employees that work for the sheriff's department, and many of those folks work in the jail and the corrections division. A lot of times, we don't remember those, we don't hear about those, but they're there every day, 365 days a year, you know, 24/7, keeping the people that we arrest in jail to make sure they don't get out until they're supposed to. So, I gotta always try to remind people that, you know, it isn't just, you know, we need someone to watch the patrol officers, because that's really the easiest group in the bunch. It's everything else that supports those patrol officers to keep the wheels of the criminal justice system running. Also, the sheriff's department isn't just an inclusive department. We support all local law enforcement. Chief Mouse, we just helped with a double homicide in Painesville. We helped recently with a homicide in Way Park. But that's what the sheriff's office does. You know, we don't take over your investigation, but we're certainly going to be there always to help you and support you. We offered patrol assistance here in Melrose not too long ago, when the city was struggling with its staffing, so we were able to provide those services for those. And that's really what the county does, not just the sheriff's office, we're the fallback. When things get tough, the sheriff's office is there, the county is there to help keep things going. So, as your sheriff, those are things that I'll look to, to make sure they continue to do the best job we can for the local communities, and not just for, you know, the big cities on the east end, but we also have to take care of the people on the west end. I grew up in Melrose. I understand the needs of small towns. I worked in Richmond, which is a very small town in Cold Spring. Forgot to mention, actually, I was a cop in Freeport. Very youngsters probably even know there was a cop in Freeport. We did have a police force and a little light blue patrol car that we cruised around in, so some of these guys remember that, probably followed him around. That's really my platform, is to, you know, make sure that we, number one, take care of the citizens of Sterns County, protect them from everything that, you know, is bad, you know, crime, you know, burglary, thefts. Our Patrol Division is well-equipped, we're well-staffed to make sure that happens. But then again, also to make sure that we support all the area cities and all the city law enforcement, including police, fire, and EMS as well. We can't forget about our first responders, that our 911 dispatch center is responsible for dispatching every day. I forgot to mention, but I actually was supervisor of the dispatch center for better part of 10 years, so I really understand, you know, what it takes to keep things running down there. So, without any more ado, and I appreciate again for waiting for me. Josh told me the meeting started at 6:30. I always getting bad information. I looked it up online. Oh, man, 6 o'clock! So, again, my name is Bob Dickhouse, I run for Sterns County Sheriff, lifelong resident of Melrose. Probably know me. My wife's been a business person in town for decades. So, that's all I got. If you have any questions, council, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, you can find me on Facebook, you can find me on my website, Dickhouse, the number four sheriff. Feel free to ask me any questions there, I'll respond. My phone number is on there as well. Without any questions again, thank you.
Thank you. Police Department Monthly Report. Chief Mouse?
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, for the monthly statistics of March 2018, traffic area was 29 citations, were issued 111 verbal warnings, 10 written warnings, most of those in the parking areas as well. In 2018, we had 406 calls or requests for service. Last year was 269, so we're up by 117 just for the month of March of this year. We ended on ICRS 1,086, and last year was 771, so 315 calls or requests ahead of last year. The vast majority of that is related to us just actually having staffing. So, last year, we were running at two officers during the month of March, and now we were running at five. So, we're able to be much more proactive on what we can do in our traffic area, as well as our business checks and just overall abilities. Going to the school was a big deal last month. We were in and out of it quite a bit, related to some threats that were up there, and just checking in on a couple of reports that we've had. So, we've been around quite a bit in March and April, looks like it's staying as busy or maybe busier. So, a few things I wanted to cover for March. We also did have 36 agency assists, some within the city, some outside the city. So, one more, a few things to cover. I worked with Scott Demick to get a better understanding, in order to try and get a better grasp on our solicitor and peddler's licenses, and what all constitutes in there. This is coming up to the time of year, you know, late May, June, July, where we'll start getting people knocking on doors, trying to sell magazines for either their college summer job, trying to raise money for this, that, or another thing. Those folks would fall under solicitors. And there's a differentiation between solicitors and peddlers. So, solicitors are people who come out, take orders, get you your product later. So, like I said, the magazine sales, Girl Scout, Boy Scouts, all those sorts of things are all considered solicitors. They do not need a license. We could require them to register with the city so that we know they're doing business here and whatever else. Somebody calls in and says, hey, I got somebody at my door, I don't recognize them, they're trying to sell me magazines, any idea? Yep, they're registered with the city, and those sorts of things. Peddlers have goods in hand. So, it could very well be the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts as well, selling their popcorn or cookies, and actually have it in hand, be able to give you your product at that point. Those would be considered peddlers, and we do require a licensing in the background period for, or background situation for them. So, when we discussed this, Scott actually found some case law that did back up that we can't license solicitors, and part of that's related to folks that go door-to-door and share their religious beliefs with people and those sorts of things. So, there's some constitutional stuff that we can't license our solicitors on. So, my only suggestion is to any of the citizens in Melrose, if you have somebody coming into your door that you don't know, you don't understand what they're trying to sell you or, and those sorts of things, just ask them either to come back later and check in with the police department, or have them maybe leave something, they can come back another day, because when folks work these situations, especially the magazine sales, they're generally in the area for at least a week or so, so they can cover the whole city, they can cover the Sock Center, they can cover the Freeports, and all those sorts of things. So, if they want to make the sale, they'll come back. Our only concern, and not that all these companies are not reputable, we do have issues where people don't get their product when they do order them. So, we just want to make sure that if you are ordering your magazines from somebody you don't know, if it's not a family member or neighbor, whatever else, that these folks are following through on their product. Those are some things we worked on in there and got some better clarification. Had some training the last couple of weeks, the last couple of days. Some of it related to critical incidents, officer-involved shootings, or something that would happen similar to that. We're going to be revising our policies a little bit to keep up with what's current, and then we'll be looking down a little bit deeper. There's some interesting things related to open forums and open mics, and I probably will just shoot that information out through mic to the council, just to see if we want to revamp how we do our open forums. It's nothing major, it's just maybe some better practices, or maybe just some ideas I think of for the future, so. Yesterday, I was at a day-long conference related to human trafficking, sex trafficking, some new ideas or new ways that things are maybe happening in that situation. I know that Janelle Kendall was out a few months ago, and we talked about that, so it's out here, it's around, it's just a matter of what is the best way for us to attack that. We are working with the schools, and there were some school members there as well, that they will see the front end of these things much more than we will, so we're definitely going to work with them if there is any issues with any of our students out this way, or any people in the community. May will be coming real soon, hopefully, warmer weather. Generally, we're about starting our citywide cleanup, so we'll probably be pushing to May. Partially, we want people to have at least a week or two to get ahead of what we're doing, as well as, we're probably not going to get rid of all this snow and all this wet ground in time to work through April. But we want to work on things in May so that we can get through the process and move things along, in the event we do need to go further down the road with some of the properties we have had with court action, whatever, that we're not sitting in October and November and whatever else waiting on the courts, so. Counterfeit money floating through town lately. We've had $1 bills going through town, which seems like a waste of time, but if you can counterfeit, I guess it's, any money's better than no money. $100 bill came through on Monday. That one did pass, actually passed the pen test. A little more interest in some, and we did send that out to the business community, so they are aware of what's going on, and that they can look at these bills coming through a little more thoroughly before they put them into their tills, or maybe stop some of this, so it doesn't get to be a loss for their business. Dog licenses are due through all of May, so start jumping on that, so that dogs and cats get their proper licensing and all their shots, and we should be good to go. Questions?
Your agency assists are up by 12, 14 this month?
Yes.
Anything specific driving that?
There was a little bit of extra activity in Sock Center. They put quite a few extra people in jail last month, and we went to go and help them. Some of them made a saint cloud times because of their great actions, so. Sterns County Sheriff's Office, we had those snowy periods where we did help with a few things here and there. I know that a chunk of the Sterns County Sheriff's Office, as well as some outside agency, we got Cold Spring, Todd County, I think we even had Blaine Police Department, some other ones, that we did some follow-up within town for them.
We were just one off the last month.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a, it wasn't a huge amount of us leaving town, that I could tell from what was in the reports, remember what was in the reports, but we still aren't able to, unless we manually check every report, be able to separate those out. Must Felicia has, she's got capabilities that I could never imagine, so maybe she could, I can ask. You could get, yeah, a more suitable number, maybe. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
City Attorney Report, Scott?
Good evening. Two items on my report, the St. Mary's Alley Vacation and the First Street Northeast Project. I think both of these will come up later in your agenda as well, but just to let you know, St. Mary's has filed a petition with District Court, asking for an order declaring the alleys that run just south of the church, and then behind the school to the cemetery, declare them vacated. And I got the paperwork, reviewed what I could find regarding the history and the use of those alleys, and my takeaway is that I think the city probably vacated those alleys a long time ago. I noticed in a publication referencing construction of the rectory, which looks like it's built over the east end of the alley in that block in 1907. And before the school, there were several other buildings on that site with the church. If it was done 110 years ago, and we can't find a record of it, I guess I'm not surprised. I don't know if, you know, if we went back through the council records from that time, if we could find a motion, or a resolution, or a statement. It never got recorded down with the county recorder's office. Off and on through the years, looking at city's records, the alleys behind the school are consistently shown on our maps as vacated, along with the streets in that area. The alley on the church block itself, sometimes it's shown as vacated, sometimes it isn't shown as vacated. I suspect that, and maybe even back then, nobody just worried about it. I don't even know if they had to have a building permit when they put those things up, or if they just did it. The, looking at the, you know, applicable statutes, I, we could certainly file a motion trying to oppose it, but I think the court decisions are in the church, running in the church's favor. Given that they've had these improvements in case the rectory for 111 years, in the case of the school, I think that was built, you know, that's over 50 years that that's been there. I also noticed at the other end of the alley, which down at the church end, looking at the GIS images, it would look like there's graves that have been placed within what would be our alley. So, I don't know that there's a strong benefit to trying to oppose it. I don't know that we would be very successful. This is a little unusual process that they've taken to get these alleys formally vacated. Normally, when someone wants an alley vacated, they come to the city, and under the state statutes, the city has the authority to vacate these. So, they bring a petition. I think we usually, discussing earlier, your petition goes to planning and zoning, and they look at it, and have hearings, and then come up with a recommendation, and then it comes to the council for the final decision. The, but you don't have to do that. The statutes call out and say that you can do what the church has done. You can just petition the court for an order vacating it. And that's the route they've opted to take. I was talking with Tony a little earlier, and, you know, one possible advantage for them to do it that way, when the city vacates the easement, I mean, we never claim that we own it, we just have an easement over it, and we vacate the easement. So, we're saying, we don't have any more interest in it, it's up to you to figure out who owns it. If you go through the court process, the court will vacate the easement, and then they will also find and determine ownership. So, I suspect that maybe one of the things they want from the court is they want that order signed by a judge that they can then file down at the county recorder's office, saying that, not just that those alleys are vacated, but then title is in the church. So, that's was something I spent some time on to try to figure out, where the city stood on it. I can, happy to answer questions now. I think there's also, later on the agenda, and I'll still be here if we have questions, when it comes up for discussion at that time. The other item with First Street North and the bids, those came in and were opened, and as part of that process, the bids are opened, they're read, but the contract really isn't awarded. You know, after they're read, the bids get reviewed by, you know, the city engineer. And within an hour after, or two after they opened the bids, and the engineer started reviewing the bid documents, it was glaringly apparent to them that one of the bidders had made a bad math error. And when it was pointed out to them, they said, oh no, there's no way we can, you know, do that. And so, they immediately said, well, we'll withdraw the bid. And so, the question was, well, can they do that? Can they withdraw? And I did, I did, went back and did some research and found cases, and yeah, they can. I mean, we hadn't, we hadn't really, if they'd signed a contract, and then they discovered they had a problem, that would be different. At this point, all we'd done was announce the numbers. You know, in those cases, the, we can't let them, after they've heard everybody else's bid, go back and correct their error. You know, that's not fair to the other bidders. Another option would have been to just throw it all out and start over again, but I think we had some pretty good bids, and we've got a timeline, and the idea of throwing it out and starting bidding process all over again was not appealing. So, that left us with, if they want to withdraw, fine, we'll let them withdraw, and they won't consider their bid. I don't think this happens very often. Usually, people are pretty careful before they submit the stuff to the city. The guy who assembled the bid for that particular contractor probably got an earful when this came to light. But ultimately, we said, yeah, that's the right thing to do. We don't want to throw all the bids out. We want to go forward, because, you know, we got some good bids here, and we want to get this project going, so. I'm sure that Mike will tell you more about First Street North later in the meeting as well. That's the items I got. Again, if you've got any questions, otherwise, I think both of these items will be coming up again, you know, later in the agenda.
Council, any questions? Alright, thank you, Scott. Community Development Director update, Lisa.
Good evening. The Planning Commission next meeting in May will be discussing the rezoning of the former craft lot right next door here, and that's a city-initiated action. Also, we'll be looking at rezoning, or amending the zoning ordinance to allow residential on the main level. Also, city-initiated in an effort to try and figure out how to accommodate sort of the mixed-use intent that is for that property. And so, those two public hearings are scheduled for the May 7 Planning Commission meeting. Then on the May 17 City Council meeting, we'll have both the craft lot, two items, as well as Casey's public hearings and related actions. There's five, five applications there. We're starting to also see increases, just because it's spring out with building permits, and we're seeing especially a larger increase in sheds. Earlier this week, I was at the Missouri River Energy Services Technology Days, and learned a little bit about increased energy efficiency, especially pertaining to lighting. We learned about new lighting technology, and they talked about some things that can be done to retrofit old light bulb fixtures. We also learned about reducing internet risks for the community, and then also the impacts that electronic vehicles would have on our electric grid system, so. Are there any questions?
Yes. Talking about your text amendment to the ordinance in the C1 zoning?
Yes.
Allowing an R occupancy on the main level?
Yes.
Rather than changing the entire text ordinance, couldn't we just put a PUD over here and allow it through a unique circumstance? Because obviously, it is one of the only spots we're going to have this come up where we want residents on the first floor with the river.
Sure. That's certainly an option. The thinking was that by doing it as a zoning ordinance amendment, if that was the direction we chose as a city to go, that it would sort of have things together and ready for the applicant to move forward, given sort of the timeline issues. If a PUD is the direction that the city wants to go, it would just take a little bit more time, and it would need to be applicant-driven. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Lisa. Alright, it is 6:29, public hearing. A public hearing, Chapter 76 Motorized Golf Carts and All Trained Vehicles. Is Craig going to speak on that for now?
Yeah.
Craig? Okay, can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Second? On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Before the chief gets into the conversation tonight, we did publish in the newspaper, Patty has a copy of the affidavit in her, mayor-to-be-sign folder, that's fine, I saw it there. So, Craig will give us a little summary on where it's at, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, so, we received notice from some residents through council members that there was some questions or wanted some clarification, and maybe even some changes to what our current ATV golf cart ordinance allows, or what it currently reads. So, I don't say five, six years ago, I'd have to look at exactly when JJ worked on this, but some people came to him saying, hey, we'd like to drive our golf cart here, there, and wherever, coming from our winter homes up to the summer homes, really neat way to do things. I don't have to fire up my pickup or whatever else to get around town for these smaller jobs that we want to do, whatever else. So, started grabbing information from here, there, and everywhere else, and ultimately got presented to the council, decided that golf carts, as well as ATVs, would be allowed to do that with a permitting process. Part of that's slow-moving vehicle signs, review mirrors, insurance, and then...
Triangle.
What's that?
Slow-moving triangle.
Yes, slow-moving triangle, slow-moving vehicle sign. Mirror and insurance, and then it gets inspected, make sure all that stuff's in place, $25 permits issued, and it's good for that year up until December 31st, renewal first of the year, or any time in between there. in between there. What we did is we took state law, which defined an ATV, put that into our ordinance. So why reinvent the wheel? Move that information over. At that time, an ATV was described as anything up to 1,000 pounds, so it could have been a four-wheeler, a six-wheeler. Area of concern right now is side-by-sides. They were relatively new or not popular at the time, so they weren't necessarily defined real well by state law. What's happened since then is the side-by-side market has blown up. People have become more comfortable with them and prefer them over some of the other ATVs that are out there. State law did change, allowing them to be classified as an ATV. They do separate them out as a class one and a class two. Side-by-sides are generally a class two. But they do have more freedoms and more abilities, and then they brought that weight up to 2,000 pounds instead of the 1,000 pounds. Not within this chapter, but within chapters throughout the ordinance, there's verbiage in there that says that things will change from time to time without notice, and just refers back to state law. In this chapter does not say that. So our ordinance currently reads an ATV is up to 1,000 pounds, which would not include the vast majority of side-by-sides, and even some of the four-wheelers are out there nowadays are over 1,000 pounds dry weight. So what we're looking to do is either get better clarification on whether we should maintain them under this ATV golf court, golf cart ordinance, if they should be removed from that, or if there's anything else that the council sees that should be done to allow or not allow this to happen. Some areas of concern with the police department is partial uniformity. You can't have a side-by-side that is 990 pounds, and then you add 10 cc's to it, and now it's over 1,000. So is it a class one ATV where it's under 1,000 pounds, which the ordinance currently says, or did it move into a class two, and now it's no longer applicable because we don't recognize it as such? Side-by-sides have more abilities. They're allowed to go on county roads, they're allowed to operate on main roadways and those sorts of things. And that's one of the benefits of having them, is you can come and go with them, is almost an extra vehicle within the house. We do restrict some certain roadways, County Road 13 North, 13 South are allowed to get over the overpass to get to the golf course, and then Main Street all the way through. All those can be crossed over, but you can't drive directly on them. So you couldn't go from Trailer Park North all the way through town and out to the south end of town currently under our ordinance. And that's where we deem those roads to be either too busy or too dangerous because of the amount of traffic. And that was part of the agreement when things got put through, is that this is what the ordinance would say. Some other areas that we talked about within the police department is time restrictions. Right now, they can operate up till 10 o'clock at night if they're equipped with the original lighting. So buy anything new. And now, basically, it's got lights in golf carts, same thing, golf carts, ATVs, four-wheelers. They have lights appropriate that you could operate up till 10 o'clock. If they weren't built that way, say you got a 1975 go-kart or golf cart, you probably don't have lights, probably don't have all the extra equipment. You can't add those to it because it wasn't original equipment. So therefore, you need to be back on your property or off the roads by sundown. So, or after sunup. So there are some restrictions in place. Area of concern, like I said, with the time restriction, we do limit snowmobiles. There are times that they can come and go through the city. Part of it's noise, part of it's just the overall usage of them as well. So that is some area that may or may not play into if side-by-sides or ATVs are removed from this ordinance. Can they operate any hour of the day as a vehicle would? And are there any extra issues with that? So just some areas of concern for the council to consider. Any other questions for me?
So chief, just specifically tonight, the council's being asked to consider raising the weight limit of what an ATV is from 1,000 to 2,000 pounds. So that's what the action item is before the council. However, if the council feels that there's other alternatives that they want us to consider, you would just need to tell us that. Then at their next council meeting, we would then revise the ordinance to reflect whatever that might be. So...
And we have already taken some ATVs or side-by-sides in actually the last couple of years. We've just treated them as ATVs already. I know that Ms. Becker's over there, couldn't see anymore. She already registered hers for the year, and we said if the ordinance does change, we're willing to refund the $25 permit fee. That if, if that's the situation that comes out of it. So if anybody's already registered, we're willing to do that if that's the change the council makes to exclude them from the ordinance. If they do increase the weight limit, then she's way ahead of the game.
So then you're saying anything under 1,000 pounds has to get a permit? Anything over 1,000 pounds, it does not have to get a permit?
The way the ordinance is currently in print, yes. Like I said, if we had the verbiage in there that said, we'll change from time to time without notice, we probably wouldn't even be having this discussion, but... Because that verbiage isn't exactly in that chapter we wanted to bring to the council for consideration.
Anybody else on the council have any questions? All right, I will open. Can you just please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Joyce Meyer. And I'm here to just talk about a few of our concerns here with the permitting with these side-by-sides. First of all, I did call cities along the interstate from Sock Center all the way through St. Joe, and none of them cities require a permit. And then I asked them about the slow-moving vehicle signs, and they said, no, they're not required to have them in their cities either. The other question is bringing in outsiders from out of town here. They come into town here, and they want to shop, they want to go out to eat, get gas, whatever, and they come in with their side-by-sides. They do not have permits because they don't even know the city of Melrose requires this. No other city does, so, you know, they come into town. What is happening to these people? Do they get pulled over? Are they getting fines, warnings? What's going to happen to them if they're going to get a fine or have to pay this permit every year also? Whether you want to come in the town two times a year or 10 times a year? Can you justify paying this dollar amount? Plus, it's shopping in town. What happened to our hometown shop Melrose? You know? Let's see here. These side-by-sides are licensed by the state already. We did pay our license, you know, so we're not driving these illegally. Don't, I just, we just don't understand why we have to pay this permit every year. I understand being inspected, but people that come in from out of town, they don't get inspected. People that come in, you know, they want to go for a joyride, 15, 20, 20 of these here, they want to come, they want to eat at the Cornerstone or, or at our other restaurants. And are you going to give them all tickets also, or what really happens here? So anyway, you know, I know these are not like a golf cart, so I don't think they should be treated like a golf cart. They, we have to have seat belts when we ride these here, you know? They have doors on the side of these here. I guess, you know, they're just becoming more popular and, you know, let's just enjoy the great outdoors. We're not abusing it. Thank you. Any questions?
Are you saying, are you including the ATV under 1,000 pounds in your discussion or argument?
You know, are there cars that weigh 200, 2,000 pounds? You know, when you start bringing in poundage, I just feel like, is that really an option? I mean, we are here to determine, you know, this paying of this permit. If no other city does it, why are we doing it? It doesn't make sense. Because when outsiders come in, they're going to say, well, if they're going to allow me to do that, I'll go shop in Freeport. I can pick up groceries at that small convenience store. So what if I pay a little bit more? But I can do a joyride and still get my things I need, or get gas, or whatever.
Mr. Mayor? I think one of the questions that's been come, that's been floated past, past my office is if it's a licensed by the state, or the DNR, or whoever, that might be a potential consideration for the council, is to use that license, where like the golf carts are not licensed. And then the city would use their, their regulatory rules to, to manage those type of resources in the city limits and to restrict those potential travel on the county roads. Because when I was here when we did that ordinance, we talked about the speed of golf carts. That's one of the reasons why they limited on County Road 13 and 65. That was one of the things that, that was floated past through, through my office, and I talked to the chief briefly about it, too. So that, that could be an alternative for the council to consider as well, so...
I mean, I have talked to different people that have, have them, and they live on the outside, and they said, I didn't know that Melrose has a permit. So if I come into town, what's going to happen to me? And I said, I don't know. I mean, it just doesn't make sense if you can go to Freeport, or Sock Center, or even St. Joe, and you don't have to have this here. Why are we doing it?
Pretty much all they say is, as long as you follow the DNR rules, you're fine.
More people are welcome to come on up?
Yeah, we just ask if you, so Patty can catch your name for the record if you do
Hi, my name is Gary Tenyon, and we also have a four-wheeler, a side-by-side. And I talked to Chief Mouse about, I think it's actually a traffic hazard to have the SMV sign on it, because once we get out on the edge of town, now we have to pull over on the edge of the road and take the sign off, because it's actually illegal. Sheriff-elect Dickhouse could, could atone to that if you go over 35 miles an hour, you are not allowed to have an SMV sign on it. So I think that's a big consideration also. And if you're thinking about raising it to the 2,000 pound, there are also cars that weigh less than 2,000 pounds. So now, are they going to be considered in this permitting? So just a few things to think about, I guess.
Welcome on up. Anybody else want to start?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the crowd that would like to talk? All right, it is 6:43. I will close this meeting, and we will take action in a little bit. Action items. Action item A is St. Mary's easement vacation, vacation. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, and Scott touched on this in quite a bit of detail at the, during his presentation. The St. Mary's Church is looking to vacate a, their, their alleyways. Staff doesn't, cannot find any legal documentation to prove that it was done or that it wasn't done. We've looked at it from the Utility Commission. Utility Commission had, did not feel that the easements were, were still needed for the utilities, nor did staff. So we did not object to that. The action item before the council tonight is threefold you could do. One is you can just acknowledge it, like the Utility Commission did. Two, you could object to it. And then Scott would then write a response on our behalf. Or thirdly, you can formally consent to it with a vote to approve it. So those are the three options that you have before you tonight, is just to take no action and it'll just happen, or one of the three.
Counsel, do we have any questions or concerns?
I guess I'll, I'll start off, just say, being on the planning and zoning typically, obviously, procedure is anytime there's a vacation of a public right-of-way or easement, typically goes the planning and zoning first for any input by the planning and zoning board. This obviously appears to be a little bit different, being that they lobby the court, but I still think it could have went to planning and zoning first for any input, because they discuss this planning stuff all the time. One concern that I can see that I, I might have is the block that has the church on it, being that that is undetermined what is going to happen there. Just one scenario, what if that block turns into residential? And we want an alleyway there to, for the, for the, you know, like we have on every other city block. Without knowing what's going on, I don't know that we can, or that we should, you know, just concur and say, yeah, go, go for it. I don't know that it's fair to everybody else that has to go through the, the planning and zoning and explain what's going on and stuff like that. So I guess, especially the block with the church on it, I'd be, I'd be concerned, not concerned, but I would say without having a plan in hand as far as what's going on there, I don't know that, in my opinion, we should just vacate it, or say that we're in support of vacating it. So, because we don't know what's going on with that block in the future.
I have a question on the, and Scott, you brought up about the grave sites that are on some of the public right-of-way there. It's on Fourth Street Southeast.
Yeah, the, if you think where the church is, the, you got...
Fourth, Fourth Street Southeast goes on the south side of, of the playground or the, the kickball, tennis court of St. Mary's, and that one goes into the cemetery. That's the one we're talking about with the grave site?
Yeah. And then if you go to the, to the north, if you think about where the, there's actually, there's fourth, and then it would be like the third, which has been vacated. And then if that's fifth, there would be like a sixth. There was actually 1.4 blocks there. And so the streets, you know, dividing those blocks have been vacated.
Right. What I'm asking specifically is on Fourth Street Southeast, it goes past the tennis court and goes to the east, is where we have grave sites in the right-of-way.
Yeah, it's, the, the alley runs east-west through the middle of the block. And so looking specifically at the alley, and when you superimpose the aerial photograph over the alley, yeah, that looks like there's grave sites in that alley.
But Mike is bringing up a picture that I don't think really...
One more to the south.
Yeah, the, the alley really kind of runs through here, down here to the south. And if you keep building this way, you'll eventually get the cemetery. And, you know, on the left, public, it's last, I would say, there's a 40-foot lot around the last 8 feet, west, east, and it looks like there's been graves from that alley. I don't know how old those are, so is that a whole part of the cemetery, or are these fairly recent? I don't know if it matters.
No. Can, Mike, are you able to pull up the GIS for... And Scott, maybe in the meantime.
A picture hopefully will help.
Yeah, I just got...
Oh, you've got a picture on yours?
Yeah.
So even if this isn't part of the purview, we're going to have the same problem where as Fourth Street Southeast comes, continues on to the edge, are we vacating any of this? Because you're going to have the same problem.
They have, the, the alleyway shows up on the, and it runs kind of over the south end of the school. And keeps going back, and you can see where they're showing road here. But, you know, you've got, you know, graves.
Mm-hmm. Great. And then again, my point is that if they, we take that back...
And I see where, you know, now, I would have to look, there was some vacation, so this might not be the city street anymore.
Okay.
Uh, you know, because I noticed the curb ends here.
And that, it's my, just a question for clarification.
Yeah, if you click on layers, and go to environmental layers, and face map, I think. Click on, oop, unclick that. But just the dropdown. Try roads. That doesn't help. Try, uh...
To the south of that, Mike? What we're talking about? And it might not be part of this purview, and that's maybe, but as southeast continues...
I think he's looking, questioning, you know, that, this street, which isn't part of the... I think he's looking questioning, you know, that district street, which isn't part of your request.
But don't we have the same problem?
And it looks like a similar problem. We can see where they, and my thought is that, again, if you open up the layers and open the environmental, scroll down and you'll see if I can try. Try dropdown or sort of. You'll see, you know, there's little lots, soccer lots up. And so, yeah, you can see that the graves still show up here. Just make sure here, I'm trying to find, there was one on the site that would highlight the streets, but I'm going back to the layers. Now, try roads, want to see that. Keep on scrolling.
Well, I guess, long story short, should we be concerned about that?
If I remember, there is a section here, along the east and the south that has been vacated. I think, I don't believe it's a full road all the way back in there. I think in some ways it stops being the city's responsibility. So this may have been addressed previously, but I just can't find, I think WSB change was the one that was cleared out for just a few simple guesses.
Poor Mike, poor Mike.
But yeah, so that's, you can see, you know, you put the lots up, you can see that, and it's a little from here. You can see the graves through here, the goal is to sure.
And besides the alley, Scott, are we vacating what would be, what would be third?
And then on the church, this is the alley, and I'm concerned that I can see the rectory kind of covering the east end of that alley. What I see is that the streets here and here have already been vacated, and that's a rest. But for whatever reason, this alley didn't get picked up, and that alley never got picked up. So we've got, you know, even if we kept them, this alley is vacated, you've got graves on this end, you've got square here. I don't know how you use it. You can't build the streets that we did there. Like I said, this is the, here, often, eastern footage, you know, I've seen this around the travel. Last segment, it's well.
But without knowing what they're going to do with the church, that's why we're thinking, we don't want to vacate it, because without knowing, they tear the church down.
Legal, our divestment justified, I have to make one that is, you know, it is justified on some facts in the law, or else I get sanctioned by the courts. And the federal city would be interested in picking up those costs, I don't know, I could get sanctioned. I have the, I have the facts relevant to the law. And on the question of vacating these, what the truth claims are to do with it in the future is irrelevant. What has happened on that lot, looking backwards.
Hypothetically speaking, Scott, if, if St. Mary's decided to either develop themselves, sell it to a developer, couldn't it be part of a developer's agreement to say, yes, you have, as part of this, you have to put an alleyway in?
Yeah, and you have to look at the development. I know we've got an alley and it was common, I think, like this is all part of the vision I asked, I was going back to eighteen seventy-one. And, yeah, no parts of town we have that. If you look at newer developments, they would be. So if they're sorted to a developer, to a developer, you need that configuration.
We'd have to replant it either way, wouldn't it?
I'm guessing that he would say, nobody wants to build on lots that are small. We need to have bigger lots. If you have an alley in there, I can't get, the developer would be back here asking for the alley. And so that you could replant that, which would be a pretty attractive development. I understand why alleys were put in, in buildings, and everybody, I grew up at alleys and they were fun playing as a kid. But nobody uses, nobody puts them in anymore. Everybody tries to move their garage, or fuck their house, don't have the horse carriage out back, and all, all aside.
All right. All right. Dick? That what? I leave it up to you guys.
I'll make a motion to concur with the staff to not object if they requested action.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Scott.
Wait, everybody's got to leave now?
Yeah.
Already?
That wasn't part of the motion.
Ordinance number four dash nineteen dash twenty eighteen, and ordinance amend the definition of all-terrain vehicle in chapter seventy-six of the Melrose City Code. All right.
So as we talked about before, Mr. Mayor, is the council has a couple of different options in front of you tonight. One is do nothing. Two is you can adopt the ordinance as, as been drafted. Or three, you can provide other guidance tonight in regards to how you'd like us to come back at a future meeting, so. Those are the three options.
All right. So let's go first.
I will. I don't think it makes any sense to have weight on here, because depending on what you're doing, how many accessories you put on, whether you put a full hard cab on or don't have any cab, it's going to change your weight. And why are we splitting hairs at that point? If we have a state agency licensing, licensing these things, I think we have no business licensing them further.
Now, golf carts, on the other hand, I think we continue, because they aren't being licensed by another agency.
Right. My thought was, is the vehicle street legal in the first place? Is it allowed on streets? If it is already, why do we have to permit it? If it is already. If it's not, maybe that's where, how we classify this ordinance is, if it's a vehicle that's, what's that?
Is it street legal on anything that's not considered a highway?
Right. Okay. So yeah, so if it's the classification that it's street legal already, then it's redone it. But, you know, maybe it's just the golf carts, and I don't know if we can word it somehow like that, but.
Are ATVs considered street legal?
Some are, some aren't. So it all depends on that licensing. And chief, I'd have to defer to the chief or actually Lieutenant Dickhouse maybe to give you a comment on one of those two.
Come again, we were talking.
By all means, finish up, finish up.
Where nobody?
No, the question was, are there ATVs out there that are not street legal? What defines street legal in regards to four-wheelers or side-by-sides or whatever?
A lot of it is related to the class, so if you are in standard, jump, throw your leg over the seat, sit down at four wheels, handlebars up like this, a little general class ones, and you're generally not allowed on a paved county highway, most of them. And you're in the side-by-sides, yes, those would be allowed on the far right shoulder of the road, and those would be street legal for best terms.
I was just thinking, you know, go back to the mirrors requirement. I'm assuming that if it's classified already as street legal, they're required to have mirrors on, or not?
Most people will come with mirrors, but I don't know that that's a standard option.
Okay.
You'd have to purchase those additionally. As I mentioned, when you do have aid from with the doors, the cabs, or whatever else, we've looked at, when we talked about it in our office, when you go to the website, what could I pick up at this, what is showing me here, no accessories, driveway, no foods or whatever else, just trying to get a good grasp on where is the cutoff line for a thousand, two thousand, the size of things, those sorts of things.
Are ATVs licensed by the state?
It can be. Some of them are only aid-related, some of them like trails.
But they can all be licensed.
So is that your argument?
If you get an egg license, that's just because you choose to get an egg license. So you basically choose all you want licensed on.
Yeah.
So your argument, Josh, if they're licensed by the state, then they should be allowed to be on the street? Is that what you're saying?
Though, yeah, I think so.
Without a problem. Whether they're street legal or not, as long as they're licensed? They should be allowed.
I feel the state's allowing them to be licensed, so why wouldn't we allow them?
So they'd be allowed to be, be on the streets?
We could always restrict that too, because they aren't as quiet as cars, and if we said, you know, after ten or whatever, you could always make that argument.
Or if we have issues, we could come back to that.
You could always come back to it.
As I say, have we been having issues with it?
We revoked one permit in however many years it's been going on. It wasn't for an ATV operating outside of the hours. That's been, yeah, I mean, I don't foresee any issue with a group that's showing up here to, what's the concern? And that's, there would just be the concern that somebody would abuse the privilege, and be just, as if the ordinance stood as, as such, that if somebody abused the privilege, they're allowed, you'd have to address it.
You're going to address it either way, though.
Right, absolutely.
That's a noise ordinance then almost, or reckless driving.
Drive a condom or anything.
So I mean, that's, doesn't matter if they're licensed or not, you know, they're going to get something else.
Yes, my opinion is, is we don't license them, we'll continue to license golf carts.
I'm getting that.
Well, and allow them on the streets.
Tony, could you?
I'm still thinking.
So the way that we could do that is staff could go back to the drawing board and come up with a, an ordinance that would focus on the slow-moving, that can't go thirty-five, thirty miles an hour on the county, on our city roads safely, and because we know the side-by-sides can do that, and I think that's the argument that you're making, and then come back to you at their next meeting and post it like we did again for this one.
One question on that. I know there's the shoulder, obviously, I think I saw it yesterday, or a side-by-side came by and they were driving, you know, along the curb. Is normally a vehicle that does thirty miles an hour drives in the lane, would we be advocating for them driving in the lane as a safety? If they can do thirty miles an hour, why not drive in the lane? Keep it away from the curb, any walkers, you know, especially if you have the wide, wide street?
I would assume that if they can operate at the roadway speed, I don't have an issue with that. It's just that when they do leave the city, they're to operate to the part of the road, so.
Right, okay.
Because we don't have, it can, it can reach speeds, I don't have any issue with that.
Okay.
All right. So you want to make a motion? Do I do that by consensus?
Yeah, that's fine.
So looking good to you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with Josh's.
All right, then we'll go with consensus. And then next month, we'll have a...
We may want to, maybe not at next month's meeting?
Yeah, it's a long meeting next month.
But we'll, maybe we can, we just have a really long meeting next month, so. We'll, we'll get it posted so we can, maybe if there's a special meeting, we can throw it on that special meeting or something like that, if we have something going on, we can.
Although probably the people, the public probably doesn't want to wait too much.
I know, just give them some direction right now somehow, or...
I think the chief knows where we stand.
Yeah, the only clarification I would like then is a class one ATV is standard four, where it doesn't always have the same abilities as a side-by-side, so are we going to, under ordinance, allow them to have those same abilities as a side-by-side? We can make them look more restricted, but we can't make them lose their stability.
So Craig, those four-wheelers that you're referring to, can they get a DNR permit to drive on the county road?
They, they can get licensed through, through the state.
No, not for a county road.
But, right, they can operate on a county road, but they can be licensed with the state if you want to meet that requirement. But they can't operate on a county road, they'd have to use a ditch of some sort.
But they, yeah.
Or township rules.
Township rules.
So in that case, any...
So basically what we'd be doing is we'd be separating the ATVs, the four-wheelers, away from a side-by-side to clarify what is the approach at this point.
I think it, I think it's splitting hairs again.
Well, I think we need to have something for the four-wheelers then. If you can't drive a four-wheeler legally from the state's...
But you can on a township road.
Township road, I don't know, on a city street if you can.
Let's see where all county roads coming into town. Every road, only one is Riverside Avenue. It's the only one that is on a county road coming into our town.
That is.
It is?
Railroad.
Railroad Avenue. I'm sorry, did I say Riverside? I'm sorry, I meant Railroad Avenue.
You can legally cross a county road, and if it's the only way to get to another area, you can drive along that a little bit. That is legal.
So I guess the better question.
You just can't drive down.
We maintain four-wheelers onto the golf cart portion of the side-by-side.
I think whatever is not by state law allowed on a paved city road or county road, I think that's what we're after.
We want to match the county road standard.
Kind, yeah, in that, in that sense. I mean, if side-by-sides are allowed, then what are we doing anything different for?
The question is, as one of the members of the audience mentioned, that you can drive in any of these towns with a four-wheeler. Surrounding towns, do we want to stand out and say, no, you can't ban those here?
Well, I don't know about four, I don't know about four-wheelers, so I'm sure they'd have, they'd have to have some type of ordinance saying that they can do that, because by state statute, you can't do that. Is that right?
Well, you're going to be able to operate on the county road to get into those towns.
A four-wheeler, you can, you just can't be in a ditch.
But we don't have any trails.
Yeah, I don't want four-wheelers in my yard either.
On any of our roads that's coming into town.
Well, they do, across the street anyway.
I know a lot of towns do have trails, but we don't have nothing. There's no farmers that have given any land to. Do we fight one battle at a time right now?
Well, let's go to the consensus, maybe at this point, side-by-sides. And discuss the four-wheeler issue later. I'd have no problem with that.
Yeah, I agree.
As Chief Mouse would say, you might want to just go class one and class two, so class two would be the side-by-side.
Might be a good. We might get fancy in the language just to do that, but if they have the, more of the ability and more of the rights on a, on a class two
And that would, that would match what the county's doing, our county roads and, yeah, I think that's what we should do.
A good start. Sure question. Okay, I think that would be the consensus then, huh?
Okay, we'll get something drafted up and get it posted. Okay, we'll get something drafted up and get it posted, and, uh, we'll get it posted as soon as we can, reasonable.
Published in the paper?
Honestly, if it's, if you match what we've done by consensus, even if it is at next month's meeting, it should be basically a rubber stamp.
Yeah.
Could be.
Well, if you match what we said by consensus.
Yeah.
Can always be pulled from the agenda, there's too many questions before you.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
So then, one per compliment, then, like, then, um, related to what we're talking about here then, Ms. Becker, I don't, your topic's already purchased one. Should we issue refunds to them or wait until this is all cleared up? May or, you know, whenever it is. Yeah, not that, my assumption is not that the twenty-five dollars will break the bank by any means, but just, we want to make sure that we get it out of our office.
My opinion is that, let's just wait until it's financed.
Affirmative.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, oh, thank you, Joe.
Oh, no.
Good, now I can start swearing.
It's on camera, Joe, it's on camera.
That's it. All right, temporary summer seasonal worker? Do we have any concerns with that, or can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
One second.
Okay, now, first and a second discussion? Okay, we have first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Old Business Craft Lot State Farm Building?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, we're just, uh, we're seeking quotes for demolition on the State Farm Building. Uh, we've done some minor modifications to the bid packets and so on, and got some clarification there. So, we'll be having a special council meeting on April twenty-sixth to award the bid for that. And we might try to stick one or two other items to the agenda for that night if things come up to them. So we can stay, the intent is so we can spend down the dollars before our expiration on the state appropriations. So that's why we're moving so quickly on that.
Okay.
So no action needed.
All right. B, uh, craft land soil?
Uh, same thing there, uh, I'm working with, um, uh, WSB to, to get that finalized as well. Uh, I'll be putting that on the agenda for this coming, coming Thursday, the twenty-sixth meeting, to get your approval for that particular quote for that work. So, uh, from the council to, to do that, so. No action needed there, just let you know that it's coming.
Real quick question, on the eight A, actually, on the craft building. So we have an estimated fifty-three hundred dollars for admin and reporting. I guess, you know, it is a commercial building and obviously there's rules to follow, but my question is, do we need a, you know, do we need a, a separate entity to oversee the process? Or do contractors, demolition contractors, come in, walk through and go, yep, yep, I can handle that, and here's my bid? Or, you know...
Well, thanks for that question. We, we actually talked about that, Mike Nielsen and I talked about that in detail. I had a long conversation with Ryan Spencer on that one. He's the consultant that's working with us at WSB. In this unique situation with the state appropriations, and that that site has a remediation action plan associated to it, honestly, I put my hands up with that one because of the legal, the environmental standards associated to it. It was just too much for us to seriously consider. So I, that's why I reached out to WSB to help us with that particular matter. But majority of the time, like, for example, well number four that we're doing repair, we did that all in-house. And we try to do that the majority of the time. We did our own demolition. When it came to a house next to the Public Works Building, we tore that down ourselves. We just hired a local contractor to do it. But when you're dealing with an environmental action plan and remediation action plan that goes with it, and MPCA review of it and documentation, that's why I cried uncle on that one, so.
Any other further questions?
I, I do want to say thank you to a couple of the council members that gave me a little grief on this one, uh, so I can then go back to the drawing board a little bit and twist the arm of our engineers a little bit on some of these, uh, things and try to do in-house, so that's good. So thank you for that.
Okay, so no action needed on that one. Uh, let's see. So eight C is the First Street Northeast project by the bakery. Mr. Mike?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, as Scott alluded to, there was a bidding error. Central Specialties had written in three dollars to linear foot for water main. Their total, I believe it was forty-one dollars and eighty cents when they moved it over to the column. And the way the specifications reads is that a unit price project, the unit price governs, not the math at the end. So, they'd actually made about, roughly about a forty thousand dollar math error. They were originally about four thousand dollars lower on the base bid than the second contractor. But if you look at the numbers in the overall bid, if you accept alternate one, which is the storm sewer, alternate, they were about sixty, almost seventy thousand dollars lower on that one. So overall, uh, if the city chooses alternate number two, it's a benefit to go with the Bright Park construction. And we really cannot hold them. I had, the question I had asked Scott is can we hold their bid bond? And he said, when they make an obvious, honest mistake like that, we can't do that. So, uh, it's our recommendation that we would project to Bright Park construction in, uh, for the base bid, in the amount of six hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents. For discussion is alternate number one, which is the storm sewer treatment unit, at the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Then alternate number two is the, uh, anticipated, uh, soil cleanup correction. So, uh, I think Mike had said that the watershed would pay fifty percent of the cost of the, uh, storm sector, which would be approximately sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. They need the city share at sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. But if we do take the alternate number one, we would delete a seventy-two inch manhole that was in the base bid, that had a cost of seven thousand dollars. So the net out of pocket, if the city were to accept alternate number one, would be nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And having a conversation with Mike, we feel that that ninety-two fifty, that that would be the additional cost to do this. We could probably get about forty percent from the state on the state appropriations, so that would leave you about a five thousand dollar bill to put in that storm interceptor. Um, one of the benefits of if we do put in the storm interceptor, we're gonna have some impervious surface conversations in regards to the craft lot. And having a storm interceptor, there may be beneficial to our application and our comments for our future EAW that might be going in. So there is maybe a benefit to have that conversation if we do do the storm interceptor. And it also goes back to about six years ago, when we started talking about, uh, stormwater issues and lake issues, and how we were gonna try to do best practices as we move forward too, so. And this was one of those best practices that we talked about several years ago, so.
All right, any discussion?
Is there extra maintenance for us now with the storm interceptors? Have to be biannually clean, clear?
Yeah, I mean, it depends. I would say two, maybe one time a year, depending on how Gary keeps the streets swept, you know, in between times. But, uh, I would say no more than twice a year, they have to go with their back door and clean that out. It's probably, uh, an hour, twice a year.
Mike, could we get, like, a septic guy to bump it out, or was that a cross-contamination issue? If you'd have someone like that bump it up?
A septic guy certainly could bump it out, yeah.
The city has the resources to do that.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you ever get ahold of Scott Henderson?
Yes, he's told me fifty percent today. Tried to get more, um, but...
How are you guys feeling?
Is that just verbal or have they committed?
That was a verbal. So what I would do, if I were, my recommendation to the council, if you felt it was appropriate, we could, um, approve the purchase of the interceptor, pending formal written approval from, uh, the Stock River Watershed District. But I got a verbal from them that they would cover fifty percent.
I agree with you on that. All right.
I'd be fine with that.
So I'll make the motion with that in?
I'll make the motion for the six ninety-five to Bright Park with the amendment approval upon confirmation from Stock River Watershed District, that they're gonna pay fifty percent.
Okay, we have a first, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Fifth Avenue Bridge update?
Here we go.
Thank you. This month, we have made some progress on the modeling. As I mentioned, at the last month, we were struggling between, we were trying to make that single-span bridge. We kinda have ruled that out, that it's not possible. The two-span bridge appears to be working. We did meet with Bendott, uh, Bridge Group. If we have to go to a three-span bridge, uh, they said that the height launch supported, that would be a hundred percent L.A. support for, uh, bridge funding. So, uh, again, we are a little bit behind schedule because of the difficulties in that modeling. The schedule we provided to get us back on, on track, uh, we're gonna have a meeting with the DNR. Uh, we said by the end of four-thirty, it's actually gonna be April or May first. And as I mentioned, that Doc's gonna, did meet with Bendott already. So, uh, at the next council meeting, we will be coming back, uh, kinda with the preliminary design on the bridge and the Rock Arch Rapids, so. With that, that's about all I can tell you tonight, and I can try to answer any questions if you do have any.
I can give you some good news. Uh, we had a conversation with the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District. There's something called the, uh, oh, golly.
Lassard.
Yeah, Lassard Sams, thank you. Lassard Sams. We had conversations with them about submitting an initial application for partnership. Uh, they submitted a rough estimate and rough concept to Lassard Sams. Lassard Sams came back, yeah, we like that, we really, really like that. Um, we would like to have the Stearns County, as well as Lassard Sams, submit a joint application in support of this Rock Arch Rapids. And so that is, uh, very good news for us. Uh, they would be applying for one hundred percent of the funding. And this would go through the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, uh, cycle. So we wouldn't know until February if it was approved or not. And then July, the work could potentially be done. Uh, same thing for the LCCMR application that we're submitting. That's also a, a full one hundred percent funding source that we're applying for. Uh, it's received preliminary approval. We were able to submit a full application for that, and we won't know for that until next July as well. Both of those are simultaneous, so. Uh, we're making positive progress. The Stearns, uh, Stock River Watershed, uh, Mike and I are gonna have some conversations again with the watershed about potential partnerships for stream bank restorations and stabilization. Uh, as of right now, they're not looking too favorably upon that from the watershed. So we're gonna have some more conversations before we come back to the council with a, uh, an ask from the council for something relating to that.
You refreshed my memory when we talked about this Rock, Rock Arch Rapids. We, by consensus, said we would, we would continue the conversation with this so long as we had X amount, percentage funded. We did not want to spend money on this.
Correct.
Tony?
Right, that was, I think, fairly strongly communicated.
And so long as that continues, I'm comfortable with it.
Right.
But if we're losing support on that, I think we gotta bail because we're throwing good money after bad at that point.
Or design it in such a way that it does not impact the other, makes the Rock Arch Rapids so expensive or whatever that, or regardless if it does or not, um, design it to a point where it doesn't impact our other, the bridge and river channel and stuff negatively, so.
So both applications are, are moving forward, and for our staff dollars that we have invested into it, it's really just my staff time and Lisa's staff time pushing into that. So if we get into anything, we'll be sure to come back to you right away to let you know where we're at, and what's reasonable and what's a challenge.
All right. Uh, Mike, the, um, looking at the update, um, as far as the river channel and the alignment and stuff, I know we had discussed multiple times about the actual channel alignment, and whether or not straightening it out a little bit more would help the bridge situation, or hurt it, or whatever. Are you still looking at that, or?
Uh, we are. We don't know that it'll, uh, there, the upstream kinda goes with the downstream. And we gotta tackle the Rock Arch Rapids to finalize the downstream. But I think once, very soon, we'll have the downstream, uh, alignment, uh, nailed down. And if, a very simple modeling shift can push it to the north, and if that'll save us some significant velocity in the channel, we are going to do that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, I don't know, you know, everybody here is aware that if that channel gets pushed north, that we're on board, that that little shelter needs to move. And if that's the way it needs to be, it's, I think, I think it needs to be, so, um, I just want to make sure everybody...
Yeah, certainly, uh, you know, if pushing it a few feet north lowers the velocity by a few feet per second, that'll save us a significant amount of money in ramp ramping on the south side.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Private parking lot?
Yeah, this one is, uh, pretty simple. We have signed agreements with all three parties for the parking lot improvements next door. Uh, we have the, we have the numbers here. We have one of them that is interested in doing a special assessment. Scott is helping us with the, uh, with the legal requirements for reporting that. Uh, that'll be brought before the council, I think, probably in the next two meetings or so to get that finalized. Uh, the work for this projects will begin here in about, Mike, you're thinking less than thirty days?
Uh, yeah, I'm thinking about three weeks. We try, like, to try to schedule a pre-con next week, and then, you know, get contracts turned around, and we need to get shop drawings approved, so.
This is, this is gonna cause some very major headaches for many, many people in this town?
The next thing I was gonna bring up.
Okay.
Well, one of the things that we need to talk about next is to, uh, get an educational process through, through here. Uh, Lisa's gonna go actually door-to-door to have conversations with people about the paving portion. And then we'll also have conversations about parking and how this will be staged over the next several weeks, so.
Could we also maybe look at putting some signs up saying, you know, the state, we're closing for Street North, or road construction starts? I mean, see that on a lot of other big construction jobs.
Yeah, we can certainly look at, uh, we do have some signage, but we can sort of look at additional. I mean, our...
I'm thinking, I'm thinking leading up to...
Yeah, like the week before.
Yeah, maybe a couple of weeks before or something, whatever.
May twelfth or whatever, it will be closed or whatever.
Okay.
Is that what we're talking to, or maybe talking to Mo's Feedin' Mill, Central Minnesota Credit Union, just with the parking lots they have along that first street?
Making people aware there's actually a parking lot over here?
Or if there could be temporary access?
Sure. And I think that's one thing that we want to help alleviate some of the frustration or concern that people may have, is that when May twelfth comes around or fifteenth comes around, the road's not gonna cease and desist. I mean, it'll, it'll be open, there'll still be some traffic. There may be some days that are slower than others, or, you know, where it's gonna be open, but we'll have access, you know, three hundred feet down the road, so.
Yeah, the, the way the contract is written is that the access to the city hall parking lot has to be maintained, uh, at all times, except for digging directly sewer in front of the driveways. So, they have to classify it, or here's recycled material, uh, you know, from third up into the driveway down here, and then also, uh, access from the craft lot parking area would be...
Some sort of illustration in the beacon would be a wise idea.
Sure, we don't have that in the plan, but we sure can do that.
Doing that just to show that if you're gonna park here, here's how you get to Main Street or your businesses or whatever.
Sure, sure, we can do that one.
All right. New business, uh, industrial park eggweeze?
Yeah, but this is something new. We're just having conversations about our industrial park and the impacts, and the likelihood of something going in there this calendar year. So we're looking at allowing farmers to submit a bid to farm the industrial park, the roughly twenty-seven and a half acres. Uh, the way we currently have that worded in a draft agreement is that there is damages clause in there that would allow for us to buy them out if there were. Uh, we also have some ballpark estimates in regards to cost. But roughly, we're looking at a minimum bid of forty-four dollars an acre, which is the cost for the tax... cost for the taxes on the parcel, and then whatever the going rate is for, for land prices. So, that, there would be, anything over and above forty-four dollars would be an expected bid. We would put that in the newspaper for one week. Gary Mittendorf will do it directly to the adjacent farmers to see if they're interested in it, and we'll have bid opening here in a week. Then we would ask that the council allow staff to award the bid to the lowest, I mean, to the, to the best, to the best rate.
Highest rate, thank you.
So, and this is new. We haven't done this before for this, but we do it in the, in the utility side for our wellfields, and this would be for a five-year lease, so.
And there's, if somebody wants to move in, I'm sure there's contingency clauses in there.
No clause, yep, we have that in there. And realistically, if somebody were to move in there, they'd probably get like the seven-acre lot, you know, and you're looking at maybe, I talked to Gary Mittendorf, you're probably looking at, you know, maybe two thousand bucks worth of buyout, and that's even a high number, so.
Okay. Is there any concerns?
When they, when they lease that farm, land, they can farm it anywhere they want, as far as planting crops, working it up and all that.
We have some type of limitations in there, Scott, you and I talked about that a little bit. There's some, like, University of Minnesota standards for well protection, stuff like that.
Some things in there about practices and manuring, and one thing that we've done this before when we rented is specifically clear there, no alfalfa. Because it's like a western band, you know, how many kinds have you had? So, it's like, smoking of rains, period. Looking for some place to grow hay, or some.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
That's a good, that's a very good question.
You, you said best practice for, you know, you brought up a point, a good point, manuring. I don't know if you wanna say injection only, as a, 'cause sometimes it gets spread on top, and it stays for, can potentially stay for a couple of weeks next to the businesses out there. I don't know if they would appreciate that. Granted, there's farmland, we're on there, so whatever, probably doesn't really.
I guess the only question I have, especially that we have, one, that's agriculture. You do have issues with, you know, contamination going on different properties, so, you know, is there any concerns?
No, I, we, no, I, I don't think, the type of crop that they're gonna grow, they may put in corn for two years and then put in beans for, I don't.
Well, if you, if you have, like, you know, tricking manure, sometimes that's a little more touchy going with workplaces, but, all right. If not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, motion carried.
Gary Mittendorf really thanks you for that, so.
Okay. Resolution number twenty-eighteen, resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed property tax abatement for Jim and Elizabeth Elias. Do we have any?
Is this, all this is, is to start the process for abatement. We've signed a development agreement that we would do this. This is just a procedural process we need to go through.
It's a move.
Okay, can I, sorry, all right. All right, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, motion carried. All right, commercial district nuisance?
Yeah, this is a conversation that Chief Mouse and I have been having, as well as Patty, as well as Lisa Atkinson, our new city planner. There's been comments brought to staff about nuisances specifically in commercial districts, and if we bringing it to the next level in regards to the enforcement of that. The practice has been, and it's strictly, it's complaint-driven. Staff would then go out, have the conversation with the property owners, asking them to resolve the problem, and we haven't had much luck in regards, in those situations. So, the next question is, is do we wanna elevate that to the next step? Meaning, do we want to bring those action nuisance items before the council for mitigation, for abatement? We haven't done that in the past. We do that annually for residential, when nuisances arise and people fail to comply with that, we'll abate it. And so, really what the question is, is do we wanna continue the practice of complaint-driven nuisances, followed by, for, for commercial, followed by actual, the abatement process? Instead of just the conversations that we've been trying. We would continue to have the nice conversations and work through that process, but before we'll just kinda let it go if they didn't happen, so.
So, current, current practice is complaint-driven. Complaint comes in, we go through the process of knocking on the door and say, hey, you're in violation of this ordinance, you need to clean it up, and they say no, and we say, okay. Is that an accurate depiction of what's happening right now?
In commercial district, yes. We try to work with them as best we can.
But that does not include land laces, or?
Not industrial, no. We don't get many nuisance complaints for industrial. I don't think I've ever gotten one.
All right, Tony?
Maybe ask Greg what his feeling on it is, if it's.
We've been doing residential for, well, since the birth of this ordinance, and it hasn't been, it's been hardly really situated, as well as followed up here. We did shy away from commercial early on, after maybe year one or two of the adoption of the nuisance ordinance, because there was concern by the council at that point, as well, business owners, that. The amount of time I needed to dedicate my staff to take care of the issues you are putting in front of me will be a hardship and those sorts of things, and some of the businesses that were up in certain time had used for some of the product that was still on their property. Generally, it wasn't immediate, I'll have this scrap or that thing, he's taken out of that piece of equipment and used within that period of time, but I know down the road I will need that for something or another. And that's where we stayed away from commercial after that, was to avoid any issue related to create hardship for businesses, whatever else, as well as the follow-up from the business community.
So, question with that, Craig, was when you were doing that, that was, just like you do residential now, where you're doing drive-bys and you're picking apart whatever you see, versus what we've been talking about here, where it's complaint-driven?
Right.
So, your time wouldn't necessarily exponentially grow if it's just following the current practice, complaint-driven?
The change that would happen is, right now, it didn't have been community developer or city administrators that were handling all the commercial things, because we didn't do that. The action we'd have added to us now would be is, here's the explanation of what's going on, where we're at, it'd be more on the paperwork side, as well as working with Scott and the courts, if you got to that process.
And the court process is the absolute last resort, and I think we've, we've talked about that at the council level multiple times when we've gotten that far. So, we really take that to heart in regards to bringing that before you, 'cause there's a cost associated to that. So, and it's, so, staff will go whichever way you want on this, we just wanted to get direction and guidance, and, 'cause we've been hearing certain things from certain council members and others from others, so we just wanna be consistent and.
My opinion is that if there is an ordinance on the books, and you do have a complaint about it, I think we owe it to the citizens and ourselves to follow through with that. If not, then let's get rid of the ordinance, there's no sense in having it if we're not gonna follow it.
Well, the thing is, too, one of the things that you'd have to consider, too, is everybody has a different judgment of what is against their taste and your taste. So, one person would complain, but the next person doesn't care about it. So, just because the one person complains means we gotta do something about it?
I don't think we have to do something about it, we have to research it to understand whether or not it's going against the ordinance, but, 'cause you do have a good point. If, if there's something that bothers me in a, whether it's a house or a commercial district, I can complain to Craig, and city staff is going to do the research, and it might not be against the ordinance, and then nothing happens. But if it is in violation of the ordinance, then it takes the next step.
So, the ordinance, like Mike was saying, or Chief Mouse was saying, well, this part is sitting out here, and eventually I'm gonna be using it. Okay, so, is that against the ordinance? Because it's something that he's gonna be using sometime down the road. So, now, you're making a judgment, is he gonna use it within a week, within a month, within a year?
I think that's in the ordinance, so isn't it, Mike, as far as saying a, let's say it's a semi-trailer, that is not DOT, but you're gonna use it for parts, whether you're gonna rip the reefer off, and axle off, or whatever. The timeframe is in the ordinance.
Yes, yeah, it is. The, nah, for, well, there has to be licensed, there's also, there's, there's a couple of different rules that we have to comply with, not to pull it off exactly, but the, there is, there is timetables for that, I just gotta look it up.
Yes, I don't know what they are either, I would say, I think that there are timetables in there.
I'm just thinking, it's kinda, I think, I think it becomes a, you know, a judgment call, a lot of times, and who makes the judgment? So, now, you're judging me, but this guy has this over here, so why doesn't he have to do it? So, should that guy make a complaint, so then he's gotta move, move his thing, or do this thing? You know, I don't know, it's, it'd be hard to enforce, I think. But I know what you, I know what you're trying to do, is clean the place up, I understand that, that's probably the complaint, is that it's a mess, so. How do you do that? I don't know.
Well, and some of the solutions that staff was talking about today, again, this, this scenario, is like, it says, I believe it was like visible, or something like that in the ordinance, so, you know, if, if they chose not to do that, well, they could put up a fence, well, that fence may cost six grand, eight grand to do that, and well, that's a cost that some of these businesses may not be able to afford. And so, again, there's all types, or, you know, spend the, spend the five hundred bucks to get the vehicles yanked out of there, and just get rid of them, or find another alternate location, so. But, yeah, it's, whatever you.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's a, it's a hard one, you know, sometimes you wonder, and I, I don't know if this has been done, but, you know, like you say, you go talk to them, and if you don't get a good response, then you go to court evidently, you know?
Yeah, that's the, that's the worst-case scenario.
Has that been used as a, you know, a way to?
Stick in the carrot.
Entice them to get it cleaned up, you know, do they, are they aware that you could do that?
We have not had that conversation with the commercial properties. It's just strictly the letters.
At the end of the question, we do explain the full process, you know, it's, I mean, it is truly information-based, I mean, if you've never been through this before, this is the catch-up step that they have.
Right.
And in the end, our, the final result would be, would be court action, you'd get a judgment, saying, yes, it can be cleaned up by a facility's own contract order, or the judge says, well, that, here, you've got your, whatever the story is, and it's not that, you'll be back in three months with a quarter, and then it's gonna last a year basis, it's not that, I mean, it's whether it's residential or.
And we've kind of learned that through this last year with the residential, I mean, it's not just a, here, we're here tomorrow with the thing, there's many steps in that, many opportunities to remediation.
I understand where you're coming from, Dick, that if somebody does look at your property, or, or somebody else, and you kinda look at two blocks on the road, and go, well, that's two blocks on the road, doesn't care, but yet now here, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's what I'm thinking, you know, it's a judgment call. I don't know. You gotta be able to do something, too, I understand that.
Uh, so, what do you guys wanna do for now? Do you guys wanna just table it and try to do some more?
It would be nice if, if we could get some clear guidance from the council on this particular matter, because we, we get, we get differences in opinions, and this is a tough one. And there's a process that we have to go through if we do get to that worst-case scenario.
I'll go with her and say, I do like the complaint-driven, when it comes to commercial especially. If we go around, I'm sure everybody's in violation of something, if we start, if we start going down that path. There are, however, some that are really out of compliance, and those might, you know, need to be bothered a little bit more. I don't know if it's to court action or not, but maybe, maybe telling them that it could lead to that, I don't know. But I don't think we need to, we need to go around looking for it.
I agree. I'd like the complaint-driven.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
All right.
But I think maybe, maybe we should just record the complaints, not that it's, you know, the same, two people, eight people, just maybe, maybe something, you know?
Well, if we get a complaint, we, we'll, like, for example, we got a complaint about a fence here just the other day, and while we're gonna address that issue, this, you know, we got, we got two or three different commercial properties that habitually, we get verbal complaints every year about it, and it gets hard to have that conversation every year, and, 'cause we know what they're gonna say. So, we just.
So, how would you guys like to do this motion?
I guess I'd like to see us use more teeth than we are. I don't know if that means the, the full process that we do with residential, but I think that it certainly has to be much more than it is now, as far as if they are complaint-driven, and they are out of ordinance.
Verified out of ordinance.
That, you know, we can't just walk away when they say no, is my opinion. Because some of these properties around town are going to get egregiously out of control, and then at that point, it is gonna cost them ten, fifteen thousand dollars to try to get it back, where if we started on it right away, it might be a thousand dollars, or whatever it is, and then it's, you stay on top of them before these things get out of control.
All right. What do you want about a motion?
Is there any way, you know, I'm just throwing this out there, you know, a lot of times when you confront somebody, you, you confront them, and rather than doing what you want them to do, they probably fight back harder. Is there any way that a person could bring the issue up to them, and, I don't know if there's any way to say, well, if you could do this, maybe we could help you out, or, or do something for you, or get it to, what can we do to help you do this? You know, so that it would be something that they would work with you, rather than, you better get that out, I'm not gonna get that out, you ain't telling me what I'm gonna do? Unless you take them to court, I don't know. Is there such a thing as that?
And we do, I mean, absolutely, the, the staff, when we have those conversations with them, and, you know, we, we have the, you know, timetables, and here's some other resources that we think that you could maybe leverage, and, but the people that we speak to are the ones that, are the ones who've been frustrated over the years.
I know.
So, and, you know, without the city, you know, paying for it and not charging them for it, that would be.
I'm not saying that.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, but, you know, there's, but, you know, we do definitely try to facilitate as much as we can.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
It's.
I'll make a motion to, with the, with the new ordinance, in according with the commercial districts, to do it on a complaint basis, but then to follow what we have been doing with our residential process. And that is.
Craig verifies them.
Yeah, we send them letters.
Pictures.
Pictures, deadlines.
And we physically go over and explain those situations, just because what comes in a picture may be difficult to understand, or, or take over a picture, like, isn't it too much, we need to physically look at this, because it makes the most sense.
Right.
And then, there's always the deadlines to take care of this, which generally, you know, if you have a deadline.
Well, if they have never had this before, where Craig goes and sits down and meets with them, that might be enough of the cattle prod to already do it itself.
Right. And then, anything beyond that comes back to the council, correct, for direction?
Just like it does now.
Right.
So, they don't automatically just go to court, it still has to come here.
Right, still has to come back here again.
It still come back for your approval to, basically, council approval to basically say, hey, we're in favor of what's been going on here, here's another thirty days, and then after that, it will be court action. So, there's, there's plenty of time for these things to be cleared up, it's just a matter of, will it be cleared up? Can it be cleared up? Before court action is.
Right.
I'll second.
You have a second? First and a second, any more discussion?
You know, if we, if we end up where it gets to a point where, where the plank is made, and we contacted them, and they haven't got results, and then it comes back to the council to do, determine what the next step is, can we request them to be at that council meeting?
We, we actually invite them to attend that.
So that they have a chance to say their piece, and we have a chance to, you know, ask them questions, or say our piece, and say, this is the law, this is what we're gonna do. And maybe that's what we do already with the residents, I'm not sure, but.
Yep.
And if they don't show up, well, pretty much tells the story, then do, in my opinion.
I like that idea, Dick.
You can always go back, if it gets to be kind of a mudshow or whatever, go backwards or whatever, so.
Any further discussion? All right, first and a second, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Pause. Close, motion carried. Information items, utility commission meeting minutes, schools and conferences, 2018 League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, ambulance department first quarter report. Anything else? Otherwise, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Question. Back in December, Mike, we talked about the schools and conferences and getting some sort of report before people go, after people go, and we haven't been getting them for the last four months.
Well, the, like tonight, Lisa gave her presentation during her, during her presentation, Scott, Craig gave it his during the, his open forum opportunity. That's, that's how we've been complying with that. If you want more than that, we can, are you asking for written reports?
No, just, I guess.
Maybe that's.
Well, yeah, that's, I do remember Craig's, now that you say that.
And then Lisa gave a summary as well too.
This one was the last couple of days, so this one is in the past.
Yeah.
So are you asking, so just so I'm clear on this, do you want us to put as an action item of the council for us to go on any type of education or travel? Is that what we're asking for? Because we can do that. I would strongly recommend against it, but, because I've been, I, but we can do that if you want. I, because it's.
That's a hard thing.
That's a very hard thing to do because some of those classes, yeah. I'm not.
Personally, I try not to be really, I don't, I really try to limit the travel and training and, you know, and encourage people to do that. But at the same time, we, I think we definitely do need to present regards of what we've learned and what we've taken away to be good stewards of that. And I don't mean to be, to, to push back, but it, but if that's, if that's the guidance, we'll do that. That's, we'll do that. But it's, that's why you have budgets and staff and.
And I don't disagree, that's why we have budgets and whatnot, but that, and I've said this for the last four years, is that our schooling and training budget at the city is exponentially larger than it would be at any private enterprise.
And that would probably be a budgetary, we need to talk about budgets about that. Like you said, sometimes with some of these meetings that come up, you get a couple of days' notice or whatever. I, I think we have an administrator that does a fair job at knowing what's good and what's not. I'm pretty sure you've declined a lot of stuff over the years, so I feel very confident, Mike, to make a good decision. But, I think we discuss that at the next budget, budget cycle. And I'd probably be pleased to talk about it again. No?
Yeah.
We'll continue to provide updates and summaries of what we're doing and why we're doing, and I think that's incredibly important, so, but.
Okay. All right, and first to adjourn, do I have a second?
Oh, actually before you do, does anybody want to go to the League of Minnesota Cities Conference?
Oh, expenses paid.
I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself. I couldn't, I couldn't help.
Craig, can I get a second?
Second. I didn't hear first.
Oh, I thought you meant first.
I'll make.
I heard a first.
Yeah.
I think the table's got to go.
Tony made the second. All in favor say aye?
All right.
Close, motion carried.